All right. We will welcome all to this meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. The mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Olson?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website, the Lake Mills Post Office, the Lake Mills Library, the Bank of Lake Mills, and submitted to the Lake Mills leader due to the resolution that we are asking for approval tonight.
Okay. Then I will call this meeting to order, and I will invite all that are able to stand and join me in the pledge.
(inaudible)
I would request a roll call vote for attendance.
Brianna Beslick.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. For our agenda revisions approval, are there any revisions that any board members would like to make? Hearing none.
I'll move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Oh, second motion.
This can be a voice vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? All right, we will move on to administrative reports and turn it over to Principal Vogel.
Good evening. I should have known I was first, but I don't think I looked at the agenda for tonight when I was, but I'm ready. So tonight is a special night, so tonight is pretty cool. We used to recognize our top 10 for our conference recognizes our top 10 students in relation to GPA. We used to do a banquet, but during the start of the pandemic, that went away, and each schools now have kind of done their own thing in the last several years. So we recognize our students in front of the board, and we also recognize our students later on at our scholarship night next Sunday. So we're honoring tonight. Capitol Conference honors the top 10 seniors according to their GPA. Tonight, we are celebrating the four years of hard work and sacrifice. There's no doubt that these students have some of the, have been some of the best representatives of our school community their last four, four years here, and even, even beyond that, in middle school and elementary. So the Lake Mills School District would like to honor the group of students and their families for the dedication to their studies the past four years. So I'd like to just recognize the students. Mr. Constein's going to hand me the plaque. You get a plaque from, from the conference, and then remember to hopefully try to stick, the board meeting shouldn't be too long, right? So a little reception afterwards downstairs after the board meeting. So first up, we have Chase Anderson. Dr. Olson, do you want them to kind of stand up here so we can get a picture?
Yes. We can line up right in front of the board members. You can.
Chase, you can stand up there. Lucky you're the first one, so you could just stand up there the longest. That's okay, though. Next up, we have Derek Bruce. I don't think Sheil's here. I think he was gone today, but Sheil Gupta is our next one, so give Sheil a round of And lastly, Autumn Scoville.
(inaudible).
All right. So why don't you give your families a real round of applause quick, too, because they, I know they helped you along. All right, thank you. You guys can go back to your seat.
Congratulations to all of the, the top 10 students. Your work behind the scenes and out in the community have been, behind the scenes, not seen, and been in the community, absolutely, and we definitely are proud that you represent the Lake Mills Area School District. Thank you.
It's quite an accomplishment.
It's quite an accomplishment, yes. All right, moving on to Dr. Olson's reports.
Yes, I got just two brief reports. One is just an update on our collaborative advisory team meeting. We held our first in a series of two and a half hour meetings to examine our facilities' needs across the district, whether that be some space needs or even some of the deferred maintenance needs as it falls into line with our long-range facilities plan. So we have a committee of over 40 community members that participated with us about two and, two weeks ago. So we, they studied the history of the facilities, part one. We, our next meeting is coming up this Wednesday at the high school, and they'll be looking at history of the facilities, part two, which will examine the history of 4K in the district, early childhood, Head Start, and some of our other early learning programs that we have in the district. So we're looking forward to that. And secondly, it is my honor to, actually, I'm going to have Sandy Whistler kind of just come up in the front here while I read this. The school board and I nominated Sandy Whistler for the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators Burt Grover Child Advocacy Award, and this award recognizes an individual or organization's strong concern for children and the outcomes for students and staff due to their work. The first person that came to our minds was Sandy. She started her teaching career in 1971 and really hasn't stopped yet. Not only does she substitute teach for us continuously, almost on a daily basis, but she also advocates for public education at a state level by leading the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools, the Citizen Advocates for Public Education, AKA CAPE, and she's also part of the Wisconsin Public Education Network. She was a very strong proponent for us during the pandemic by leading the Keep COVID Out campaign, and also subbed for us continuously during that time, helping us keep our doors open when we had a lot of staff out and we were very short of substitutes. And I'm going off of Brianna's letter. So when Brianna asked our elementary students what they think of Sandy, they stated, Mrs. Whistler is always there to listen and help us when we need it. She's a really nice teacher. She helps me when I get frustrated and stuck. She's always helping around our school. She's always smiling. She makes me feel smart. She is great at teaching. She is nice. She is good at everything. She reads to kids. She's a good teacher. She will always help you if you need it. She's good at encouraging kids by saying things like, "You got this." Sandy, you're a winner in our eyes, and we are so thankful for everything that you do. Thank you. We'd like to say happy birthday to our board president. It's Amy's birthday tonight, so she chose to spend her birthday with us.
Well, to lead on with the celebrations, we will now, celebrations and recognition, we will now go on to the recognition of staff years of service and retirees.
We are going to start first with Chuck.
So what I don't know is, are we handing out fancy things over here? I don't know which of the things I'm supposed to be handing out. So I can give them all of the people that I talk about?
(inaudible).
Hopefully, there's names on them, otherwise it's going to be very confusing. Hopefully, I don't get to the wrong people. No, I am here to recognize two staff members from the middle school, Mr. Brad Klotz and Ms. Donnell Warner. And so I'm, I'm super excited to be able to do this. Both of these two individuals have, have helped me in my transition quite a bit. So I'm going to start with Mr. Klotz. As I started in Lake Mills, it became immediately clear to me that Brad was a leader amongst our staff. Brad is an incredible wealth of knowledge and experience. If I ever have questions, he's someone that I know I can rely on to share past middle school practices, and he's been a huge help for me in understanding how things have worked at Lake Mills Middle School. Brad is also an incredible colleague. Some of his colleagues are here tonight, and they, they can certainly attest to how deeply he cares about his profession and ensuring that we support the incredible staff we have in Lake Mills. In the world of music lessons and ensemble practices, it's easy for a music instructor to get caught in that music area and really not see the rest of the staff. This is not Brad. Brad is always out and about in our building. I regularly see him, regularly see him connecting with his peers and colleagues. He is someone our staff trusts and feels supported by. Brad is also an incredible teacher. I have the lucky perspective of being both his, the principal at the building he works at, as well as a parent of one of his students. I see Brad's passion for music being passed on from him into his students every day. One of the most exciting days in the Olson household this, this year was when Lars, my son, came home, and he showed me that he was able to play the opening riff from Seven Nation Army on the tuba. I can assure you, the Olson household has had its fill of that song at this point, but it was really, it was really awesome. He was, Lars was super excited, and it was just like a day, I think, where they, they were doing something, and Brad, Brad taught him how to do it, and it was, again, it was a highlight for Lars and, and band this year. That being said, this is just one of hundreds of examples of how Brad has inspired his students to grow into musicians. Finally, Brad's an incredible advocate for our awesome music programs. We've had lots of conversations regarding how to get more students involved in band and music education. If it were up to Brad, I am certain that every single student in our school would be in an ensemble in the middle school, preferably for him band, but I'm sure he'd be okay with choir and orchestra as well. His passion and advocacy is what makes the Lake Mills Music Program so incredible. It's because of the hard work of Brad and his colleagues that we continue to be recognized as one of the best music community, excuse you, best communities for music education. Lake Mills is lucky to have Brad as a teacher, and I feel honored to call him a colleague. Thank you, Brad, for your 20 years of service. I'm also honored to be up here to congratulate Donnell Warner. Teachers and administrators often get a lot of the attention of the work that happens in a school day, but as anybody who's worked in a school knows, it's the administrative assistants who truly make the building run. Donnell is the glue that holds our school together. She is warm and welcoming, she's a warm and welcoming face to students, families, and staff alike. There is nobody who comes into the office that does not get a warm welcome from Mrs. Warner. She also has that incredible ability to hold students accountable while still making sure they know they are cared for. Donnell is always making time for any student who has a problem or needs a little help, and usually has a motherly piece of advice for students and adults alike. Donnell is also a wealth of knowledge. She's been, she's seen administrators come and go, and she knows the history of our building and our community as well as anyone around. She has been such a help to me as I've learned a new system and a way of doing things. Donnell is patient and kind, and when she, even when she's probably thinking, "Chuck, I've told you this six times, you should have it by now," she answers my question with patience and grace. The students and staff at Lake Mills Middle School are lucky to have Donnell, and I feel so honored to get to work with her. Donnell, thank you for everything you do. We truly appreciate everything you do for us and our school. Thanks, Donnell.
I'm Tasha Neeler, and she's not going to be very happy with me for this, but I'd like to ask Roseanne to please come up front and stand while, and probably everyone else from here on out gets to do that, so you can all blame me. So it's my honor and privilege to recognize Ms. Roseanne Ponzel for her 20 years of service and dedication to the district. In Roseanne's 20 years, she has served numerous roles and has proven to be a truly valued staff member. I'm not going to look at you. It's not like she's retiring. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to work next to Roseanne every day and also to be able to call her my friend. Roseanne gives full effort on a daily basis and has undoubtedly advanced our district's developments with her forward-thinking and innovative ideas. She is sincere, mindful, efficient, and always considers staff feedback on ways for the district to grow and improve. She routinely fields calls from our staff and also is a resource for other districts, providing assistance on state guidelines while simultaneously offering practical assistance and directives. Most importantly, Roseanne is a thoughtful person who people trust and rely on, on a daily basis. I also like to say that she is an amazing storyteller. She likes to tell lots of fun childhood stories and times of her times in the building. In fact, one time, we had the opportunity to attended a conference together where we ate lunch and sat with a group of, I don't know, six, seven other complete strangers, and Roseanne went on and on telling one funny story after another and had us all rolling in laughter, and we could have sat and listened to her for hours. I would remiss if I didn't mention what a Skyward expert she is. For those of you who don't know, Skyward is our student information and financial system, and for the past eight years, Roseanne has been a volunteer committee member and leader in the Wisconsin Skyward User Group, where she assists in coordinating and arranging outside presenters for two conferences every year, and that's just some of the things that she does. In fact, she's been asked on a whim to be a presenter at those conferences when needed as well. Prior to getting hired in the summer of 2003, Roseanne also spent some time as a substitute teacher for, or substitute para for over a year, so 20-plus years is what, what she's at. She started at the elementary school as administrative assistant for eight years, and then moved on to the student data manager and open enrollment coordinator for 10 years between the middle school and the district office. And in the last two years, she has taken on the role of the accounting specialist, where I have particularly, particularly enjoyed partnering with her in this crazy world of school finance. Over the years, Roseanne has also been, become a summer school expert, where she's been in charge of the administrative, as an administrative assistant, trained the incoming administrative assistants in charge of summer school, completed state reporting requirements, oversaw the purchasing and the budget, you name it, the list goes on and on. Finally, Roseanne has also spent 30, 30 of her years coaching, so she coached basketball and volleyball for 15 years, and then in addition to that, another 15 years coaching volleyball as a, in the middle school, high school, and club levels. Roseanne, we thank you for your dedication and wish you a congratulations on this 20-year milestone.
It is my privilege, and I've asked our literacy coach, Michelle, Michelle Cook, to join me to honor Karen Glasser tonight. Karen, would you like to come up? So we'd like to congratulate Karen on 25 years of service to the Lake Mills School District, and would you believe this is her second career? When I met Karen last summer, I learned that her first career was as a vet tech, and she was kind enough to give me tips for my fussy cat, so that was very helpful. But soon, I became very thankful that Karen found her way from that first vocation to Lake Mills Elementary. In those first days of school, I watched Karen take new staff under her wing and become like their unofficial mentor, showing them the ropes. I also witnessed her unlimited patience. She takes the lead in teaching our kindergarteners, the school cafeteria, and the playground procedures, and that takes a lot of patience. Karen is proactive in everything that she does and helped both me and this year learn the ropes. Kind is the first word I think of when I think of Karen. She goes above and beyond expectations every day to not only help students learn, but also to make them feel valued. She works closely with our kindergarten students, teaching them, like, again, the expectations of school, and she gently reminds them with care and concern, and I'd like Michelle to share a few more words.
Karen has a quiet, peaceful presence that makes everyone around her feel relaxed. Her calming energy is one of the many gifts that she shares with our students and staff. Over the years, Karen has been an integral part of our school and, more specifically, our reading team. She is extremely knowledgeable about literacy and effective teaching methods. She has provided students with high-level literacy support, both in the classroom as well as small groups. In 25 years, she has seen many educators come and go. Teachers that get an opportunity to work with Karen say she's extremely thorough and an amazing note-taker. Her gentle, calm voice has been heard by hundreds of children, encouraging them to keep trying even when learning is difficult. Karen takes pride in her work and is always willing to learn more and go the extra mile. For example, I just learned that when our, when we shifted to instruction virtually during the pandemic, Karen became a virtual assistant to our educator, Mrs. Russo. Not only did she meet with students online, she handled the distribution of all the materials that families needed to pick up. Talk about organization and taking on new challenges. Over the years, she has had to pitch in in different capacities at Lake Mills Elementary School, taking over some lunchroom and recess duties, but her heart remains in helping kids learn. Our staff, students, and school are better because of her dedication. Thank you.
Could I please have Nancy Classic come to the front? I'm honored to speak on behalf of Nancy Classic. She's served our students and families as our occupational therapist assistant for 25 years. She provides therapy with students in elementary, middle, and high school. She has the joy of seeing students come full circle, from early childhood and then graduating with her diploma. Her modesty makes this recognition all the more important. She quietly goes about her business, making our schools a better place to be. She's an important part of our school district and our special education department. Most of us would consider her the glue that keeps us all together. She has a special knack for developing relationships with staff and students. She gets kids, she gets kids. She strives to understand their backstory, to better serve their needs individually, as a professional, as well as a team. She's always thinking about what's best for kids and what will serve the students best for their future long-term plan, which is our goal in special education and in education. She learns students' interests fast and uses their interests to build learning activities that are engaging and skill-based to reach their future goals. She genuinely cares about our staff. Often, she checks on us to make sure we're doing okay. She seems to know the right time to do so and is very in tune with the feelings in the different buildings. People go to her for advice around students, but also for personal advice. You've been there for all of us. We are so grateful to have you at Lake Mills. Thank you for choosing Lake Mills. Congratulations.
So most of you know I'm just rounding out my first year here in Lake Mills, and I quickly learned the important role that Pam she has in our elementary building. In team meetings, I would repeatedly hear, "Oh, I got this from Pam. I got to share this with you," or, "Oh, I talked to Pam about this student, and she suggested this strategy." So quickly, I learned how important she is. She's just a wealth of literacy knowledge, and she shares generously with all of the staff at our elementary school to help everyone to grow. She's passionate about providing students with the best instruction possible. I have often heard her, as she looks over her schedule, trying to configure just how to fit one more child in there somehow. She even starts her day before everyone else to fit in a student who's able to come early. And I've asked Michelle Cook to speak a little bit further.
For those of you that know Pam, you can imagine how hard it is to write everything in a short amount of time. I've been thinking about it over the weekend and on and on, and the immense impact that Pam Moeen has had on students, family, and the community of Lake Mills, and came to the realization that it's impossible to fit it all in tonight. I'm only going to break the surface of what an amazing human Pam Moeen is. Three years ago, when I joined the Lake Mills School District, I had absolutely no idea that I was going to get the chance to work and learn from one of the most amazing women I've ever met. When someone gives you a nickname, you really know that it's a sign of love, and Pam is loved by so many people throughout our school, and she's known as Pammy, Miss Hawaiian Tropic, Pammy the Planner, the Mighty Moeen. But most importantly, she's known throughout our school as the literacy expert. She is our go-to person if we are looking for a new strategy to help students or new materials for small groups. If she doesn't have the answer, she finds it. I recently learned that she watched a webinar on her birthday, just in case there was a new phonics component that she hadn't heard of yet. Pam is the definition of a lifelong learner and provides the rest of us with the motivation and confidence to try new things and do what's best for students. Pam has the patience and knowledge to help teachers and parents understand what she is trying to teach and why. She does this so that the work carries into the classroom and at home. Pam helps wherever, whenever needed. She helps with car pickup in the lunchroom and is also the first to volunteer for other projects and events that are important to students and families. Read Across America, the Book Fair, Family Literacy Night are just a few of those. All of the things that Wendy and I have mentioned are only a part of what makes Pam so special and priceless to our community. The other part is her heart. One example of her amazing heart is her dedication to the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. Pam has been a big sister to a student in our district for several years. She's a role model of excellence, compassion, and dedication in our community. I recently spoke with our previously, previous reading specialist and good friend Pam, of Pam's, Jenny Nichols. These two worked side by side for years, and Jenny had so many wonderful things to say about Pam. Here's just a few. She said that Pam is the most helpful and compassionate person. Whatever someone needs, she makes it happen. You need five different colored dice in three minutes? Voila. You need an, you need an ice cream maker for a graduation party? It's on your back stoop after school. Pam goes to whatever length it takes to make things happen for staff and students. Pam is also a master communicator, going above and beyond expectations to make sure families are involved in the learning for their children. Pam always goes above and beyond and supports our students, staff, and families, and is a passion, and is passionate about helping everyone reach their fullest potential. We are so blessed to have her on our team. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you for all you've done.
Come on, Mama. Beth Cordy is being honored for 30 years of service, and she's, her team likes to call her Mama Cordy. So here we go. Congratulations to Beth Cordy for 30 years of service to the Lake Mills Area School District. I see you've got the big one there, so that'll be fun to see. Personally, Beth made me feel very welcome at Lake Mills Elementary. She shared her experience from her veteran perspective to help me understand the traditions, where we were strong, and where we had opportunities for growth. Beth's classroom is filled with warmth, high expectations, and humor. You can feel the energy of students working to meet those expectations that she puts forth. Everything she does is with great purpose, giving students extra one-on-one time or giving an advanced learner a new challenge. You can see the love the students have in their eyes for her. Beth draws students in with her voices during read-alouds and her sense of humor. Step into her classroom, and you may learn about the Bank of Cordy or hear fun voices. They always draw me in when I get to sit down and hear one of her great read-alouds with her fun voices. Beth is a leader in our building, helping teachers to learn and grow as well. She welcomes teachers into her classroom to continue to learn and visits their classrooms to provide a mentoring coach and friend. But don't take my word for it. The second grade team asked me to share a few words on their behalf. I know. If you cry, I'm crying, so it's okay. The second grade team would like to congratulate Beth Cordy for 30 years of service. She has taught and enriched the lives of countless students, families, and educators. We often have a saying in second grade, "What would Beth do?" What bracelet's made? Mama Cordy, as she is affectionately known, is our point person. When we need advice, insight, or a laugh or a hug, her door is always open. As we all know, educators wear many hats. Beth wears each hat with grace and a little bit of flair. She is the type of mentor who will sit down with you to role-play a hard conversation that is weighing on your heart. She is the type of mentor that will offer solid advice when you feel like your back is against the wall. This year, just to make students smile, Beth planned a birthday party for our phonics mascot, a stuffed dragon named Gus. She makes kids love school. We have been honored to observe Beth in all sorts of classroom situations. She wows us with her gentle demeanor when helping children through hard times. She stuns us with her ability to captivate each student, and they hang on her every word, and so do we. The Lake Mills Community School District, Elementary School, and currently, the second grade team are beyond lucky to have the guidance and support only Beth Cordy can give. Beth, congratulations on being a life changer for 30 years. You have no idea how much you mean to us and this community. Thank you for all you do. We love you.
All right, can we get Harvey Simden up for us?
So tonight, I have the honor and privilege of recognizing or congratulating Harvey on his upcoming retirement. Harvey was hired in February of 2016 in the Maintenance Department as an Assistant Building and Ground Supervisor. Harvey came to the district with a wealth of knowledge and experience mainly in the areas of plumbing, HVAC, and building automation. He is no stranger to HVAC projects, as he was involved in school district remodels and additions in Manona Grove, Edgerton, Fort Atkinson, Stoughton, and of course, here in Lake Mills. Over the years, Harvey has continued to further his knowledge and expertise by taking several trade-related courses through the Supervisory Training Program of Wisconsin. He also has been able to take part in continuing education through custodial and maintenance conferences with WASBO, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. In Harvey's tenure with the district, on two different occasions, he was asked to step into the interim director position and was able to seamlessly take the lead in the department. He has always been focused on being fiscally responsible, which I very much appreciate, investigating ways to save the district's resources by looking for heating and cooling efficiencies, to managing the Maintenance Department, to purchasing larger pieces of equipment. When Harvey's not working, he's enjoying spending his time with his wife, two children, and taking trips to northern Wisconsin. In fact, that is where he and his wife will be relocating and enjoying their time in retirement. Harvey, we thank you for your years of service and dedication to the district and wish you well in retirement. Congratulations to you, Harvey.
I'm gonna talk about Margot Trinidad, but if I'm guessing correctly, Margot is not standing up right now, and she is still sitting. Okay. Margot is retiring. Margot has, she didn't want to tell me the number of years, but she's been here as long as I have. I know she trained me when I was a teacher here when I first started back in 2006. So what does Margot do? Margot is our Jedi Coordinator, and she is, I would say she is one of our technology coordinators as well. And what does that mean? So getting into what does that mean, if I'm gonna describe Margot in two words, the first word I'm gonna use is service, right? So as Jedi Coordinator, a number, a large number of our kids take Jedi courses, which a Jedi course is that they're online, right? And so think about giving a 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old, like the first day in September, a course, say Criminal Justice or Social Problems, you name it, Sports Officiating. So the kid sits down, opens up the computer, and has 15 weeks on their own with a computer screen to finish a course, right? Sounds easy, doesn't it? Well, Margot has assisted students over the years in completing those courses. And that is, it is not easy. She goes above and beyond the daily thing she does with kids as far as getting that coursework done. So service to students, service to staff, right? Anything the staff needs, anything I need as far as technology. Numerous examples of me calling Margot, like, "Hey, can you help me with this? We have this coming up." Margot is definitely a person of service and has been for 18 years here at Lake Mills High School. Margot, the second word I was gonna describe Margot was a friend. And she is a very, very close friend of mine, and she's a very close friend of a lot of people on our staff. And doing this job long enough as principal, you know, some of the bad things are is losing people like this. And, you know, you go along in your career, and it's like, I'm losing people every year here that I've worked with for so long. And Margot is definitely one that I'm gonna miss. I know our students are gonna miss, and I know for sure our staff is gonna miss. She is definitely a tremendous representative of our school and our whole school community, there's no doubt. I know she has helped me personally through a lot of things that have gone on in both of our lives over the last nearly 20 years, and I'm gonna miss that. And I know she's done the same for multiple people on our staff and for a large, large number of our students. So Margot, I'm gonna miss you, but I am very grateful for your time here. And feel free to visit us, but not as a sub. We're gonna keep trying on that. We know what we've talked about, I don't know if I can say this out loud, we've talked about even making this position part-time, so maybe you come back and do it part-time maybe, but just kidding. No, and you're not going to Barboo either, that's for sure, but. Margot's a great person. She's a great educator, and I know we're gonna miss her. Congratulations to Margot Trinidad. We couldn't fit Margot's gift in the room, so she's gonna have to get out.
All right, that's, everyone that's here, we also recognize Mr. Jim Clift, eighth-grade science teacher, who has had 25 years of service. I'm sure he's somewhere coaching something, somewhere. So we're definitely involved with kids, and we definitely thank him as well. All right, moving on, we'll.
We'd like to just, I don't know if I was gonna cut you off, Amy, but we have hors d'oeuvres downstairs. We would like you to stay a little bit for some social business and just get to network with our administrators that are here. The board and I have a few action items yet, so we'll be down in a minute. But we don't wanna make you sit through those unless you absolutely want to. So we'll dismiss anybody that wants to go downstairs into the community room, and there are snacks waiting for you down there right now. Or feel free to stay. Administrators, feel free to go downstairs with your staff. You don't, I'd rather have you be with them.
All right, we will move on quickly with the bus, Tasha Naylor's reports, including the bus bids.
Okay. So as you know, our replacement schedule for transportation is to replace one single bus every year. Brad was able to secure three bids for us. Two are from Nelson's Bus Service and one from Midstate Truck Service. Those were attached to the board docs. Just to recap, we have a pre-owned model, 2024 model, that came in at $116,873. A new model from Nelson's Bus at $128,935, so about $12,000 more than that pre-owned. And they're saying that it would come in with approximately, the pre-owned would be approximately 15,000 or less miles on it when we would receive it if we went that route. And then the third bid is from Midstate Truck Service, and that's a brand-new international bus at $137, just over $137. All the buses are equipped with a camera system as well. So if you can remember back to Brad Mosher's presentation at the March Board Meeting, he had some advocacy for the fleet and what he's hoping for and looking for. So, you know, his wish is to extend the life of the fleet as much as possible. And with that being said, is hoping for a new bus this year. Knowing that we are in a, you know, pretty, you know, we have such a deficit that we do this year. A pre-owned model is also a really great, acceptable alternative to the new bus. And that's what we did last year. We did a pre-owned, one-year-old bus. So with that being said, I don't know if the board wants to discuss any further, you know, which one to go with. Like I said, Brad's hoping for that new one through Nelson's, the 2025. However, we certainly could go with the 2024, just knowing that it might have a little bit less life for us.
Tasha, does, is the bus the kind of asset that can be depreciated over three years? So the additional cost of, what, $12,000 or something?
Correct.
Would get depreciated over three years?
Yes.
So that's like $4,000 a year additional? Or I'm just looking at the difference between the two buses.
Right. I think the depreciation schedule that they put on a vehicle for a bus is eight years.
Okay.
The full depreciation. I would have to look at it specifically, but I believe that's the recommendation that we do when we do our audit, is how we depreciate it all.
So from the budget, kind of accounting standpoint, it gets spread out over eight years. So I guess what I'm getting at, it seems like the difference between the two, if you look at it over eight years, is not quite as much as getting it all in one year, is what I'm saying.
I do.
I understand if you don't have the answer to this, because I thought it later in the time I can ask. But when Brad is thinking longevity of the fleet, if he, does he feel that if we were to purchase a new one, opposed to like the pre-owned one, would that mean potentially we might not need to do a new one every year? Is that kind of the longevity he's thinking? Or in other words of just, as we resell, it's a higher value because it came in new?
I think so. I think the latter of your explanation. I think that he's looking at it over the years of time, that the useful life of that specific bus is my assumption based upon his presentation, because he talked a lot about where they were in their useful life in terms of how many miles they had on them. And so I think that's more the perspective of where he's coming from. I think he, you know, one of the things he talked a lot about is the need for vans as well as buses, and that currently isn't really in a replacement schedule in our plan. So I think it's something that we have to look at as a committee and talk about what we wanna do in the long term. If it's, discuss this as we discuss the operational budget and things that we have going on. Because right now, like I said, we don't have, we don't really have a plan for replacing those vans either. So I don't think skipping a year would necessarily be in his plan.
Could we go with the used one and then put, like, when do we need to replace? Could we put that money away and save up for, like, I'm just thinking of how we can keep that, those funds for his fleet? The difference between the used and the new? And apply that to a new van in the next year? Or, you know what I'm saying?
Do you mean the saving, like the $12,000 savings?
Yeah, like, in essence, if we go with the used, we're saving $12,000. Can we earmark that for future?
I would have to look into how we would account for that. I don't know, since this is a fund-attend expenditure, that fund balance, it would be in the fund balance? There's not a separate account for transportation specifically?
I guess even just in our notes, kind of like, oh, we saved money here. So can we, you know, snowball that over the next two years and then put that, I don't know, just to have more of a reason why we could? Just, yeah, that's all.
You know, what we need, I understand what you're saying. I think where we need to get in the district, you know, and we don't have the funds for it right now, is much like we have, you know, the budget set aside for the ongoing facilities needs, where we set aside $250,000 as part of the budget. You know, that's what needs to be done with transportation between school buses and vans and, you know, some even of the other vehicles. It's just with, you know, like forecasting a one-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit, there just isn't that additional money to be able to do that. But I know that's something that Brad would very much like to do so that we just know when we're purchasing these vehicles, this is the, you know, eight-to-10-year plan to be able to do this, and this is, you know, the potential cost for that. But that would definitely take some additional money coming into our budget to be able to do that. But that would be the prudent thing to do if we had a larger budget.
The other piece that I was thinking about too is the cost of buses and how much they've increased over the years. I think two years ago, we bought a new one for $91,000. Maybe it was three years ago. I'd have to look back at my records. But it hasn't been long that we were able to buy new, and it was significantly less expensive.
Where are we at in pursuing that EPA program for obtaining electric buses?
Brad has explored it a little bit further. They, there's a threshold that remind me to qualify for the grant. He's not hopeful that we would receive it in the next coming years, and I can't remember.
It was based on free and reduced lunch numbers, I think, and we aren't as high in these initial grants as what would take to qualify for those. But I know it's something that Tasha and Brad definitely have been keeping an eye on. Hopefully, those grants, you know, continue to grow so that other people can take advantage of them.
I think there was only one or two districts in the area that even they were looking at them at this point. But it's something that's in the back of our heads, so.
So just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I can appreciate that he has. I was just gonna say, I can appreciate that he has this longevity plan set up. Um, and so I think from him, I would like to see, because my knowledge, we've never really done a new bus. Um, so then what would the value be when we traded in new versus the value when we would trade it in as like a pre-owned vehicle? To try and compare some of those differences, but then yes, for him then to be able to set up a schedule for us. So, I mean, because then otherwise you're hit with a big chunk all at once, so I can appreciate his long-term planning and thinking in that sense. But to understand what the difference might be, um, as we look at that new versus pre-owned end value.
And I was just wondering if used bus prices are inflated like used cars are right now, where it's like, well, the difference is not that much, so why don't we just go with the new one because it's starting at zero and, you know, we own it, we don't know how it was driven in the past, you know, mechanical issues, things like that, knowing kind of that we're getting something fresh and we can take care of for not that much more. I don't know.
That's a good point. I had thought of that too. Like, the, the 15,000 miles isn't a lot, but you don't know what mechanically, um, I mean, I'm sure they'll stand behind their bus.
The warranty is limited on the pre-owned. I don't know if I mentioned this already, but it would just be the two years, 50,000, as opposed to three years, 50,000.
I can't believe they only go up to 50,000 for a warranty on a bus.
That's a problem. I'm sure for a cost, we could get more.
My personal opinion is with the, this deficit that we're going to potentially be facing this upcoming year, that with only 15,000 miles on the used bus and with the previous used, it, the previous bus that we purchased used still running very well, we haven't had any issues, I would, I would say saving the, the whatever it, the 10,000, 20,000, whatever it is, and spending it other places, that would be the prudent decision economically, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, just a comment on that. I was thinking about that. Fifteen, the difference between the two, not a lot, but I think we're going to be faced with a lot of these kinds of things and they'll add up over time. So even though it seems, um, not a huge, it's not a huge amount, I, I think, um, we'll be seeing a lot more of these kind of situations over the course of the year, a couple of years.
And hopefully if budget, state budgets, or if, if referendums come through or what have you, definitely budget, will budget for the future, new buses, but in this, at this time, that's, I guess, my, my opinion, so.
I kind of tend to agree that, I think, I like what Ken said, is that with facing this big budget deficit, you know, fiscal cliff, that these decisions will add up, um, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. And if, right now, we tighten our belt as we can, you know, however much that, you know, even if it's more symbolic in some ways, but I mean, that we're really taking this fiscal cliff seriously, I kind of agree with that.
Is there any other discussion? All right, we will be voting on this later in this meeting, so.
Thank you.
All right, now, one more recognition that I get excited to do, but I will wait just to hold, and I'll let you present the, uh, the high school report from our own, uh, Liliana.
And I gotta say, after I dismissed everybody, I feel horrible, because we should have moved you up before the bus conversations. And I'm like, I apologize profusely. We were just, that's the order that we had, the agenda, and as soon as everybody left, I'm like, oh, shoot. Um, we should have moved your report around and-
Maybe a little mention and commencement or something.
Get everybody back up here. So I, my apologies, that is my fault.
Well, I'm kind of glad to be talking in front of those people anyway, so, it's okay. Um, so I just sort of start off by saying how grateful I am that I got to sit up here with you guys this year. It was just a wonderful experience, and especially to you. I just want to say thank you for helping me in the beginning navigate it and to you, um, just navigate everything and work around. And this was just a wonderful experience and I really enjoyed it. Um, so I'll start off with my sports reports. Um, we, our student athletes are doing amazing this year. Um, we're expecting high, high numbers of attendance in the weight room for our speed and agility this summer. Um, for girls soccer, we are 10 and 3. Um, we are within the top three in conference. We're with Sugar River and Lodi, which are two really amazing teams. Um, we have five games left. They're all home games. We have one tomorrow, which is our parents' night. We have one Thursday, which is our coach ordeal remembrance night. And next Tuesday is our senior night. So those are like the big highlight games that we have. Um, baseball, they are 13 and 8. They're 6 and 2 in conference. They have a game tomorrow at Lakeside, and then Thursday, they have senior night at home versus Lakeside again. Softball, which is where Mr. Cliff is, um, is 15 and 4. They're 7 and 3 in conference. And they're currently, um, at Waterloo, um, with a game tomorrow. They are going to be at Deerfield. And a special shout-out to Belle Topol, who just broke the school record for the most career home runs, uh, with 15, uh, at the moment. She still has a few more games to go, so I know she's hoping to get that up, but already a great accomplishment from her. Um, track, they have a conference tomorrow. Marshall, uh, they have regionals starting next Monday. Uh, so that's when the tournament is starting. Um, they hosted a quad, which went extremely well. They are seeing a ton of personal records in the, in every tournament and meet that they have, and the coaches are all very, very proud of them. Um, golf, they have a conference tomorrow and they said no comment, so. Uh, I didn't really prod at that one. Um, I'm sure they're doing better than they say though. Or at least they're having fun, which is the most important part. Um, so, uh, we just had teacher and staff appreciation week last week. Uh, the students found many, many ways to say thank you to our staff and teachers, including NHS Holding in Ice Cream Social for our teachers and staff, which was fun, and I maybe stole a little bit of candy, but that's okay. Um, we have yearbooks coming out Friday the 26th, so I'm very excited, my last one. Um, graduation is June 4th. It is actually 19 hours, 16, or 19 days, 16 hours and 43 minutes. Not that anyone's counting though. Who would do that? Um, we're really looking forward to hopefully a beautiful day, definitely a beautiful ceremony. We are having six valid Victorian and salute Victorian speakers. Um, the senior class gift is going to end up being more money or the remaining class budget to the display for the Spirit Bell. So we're very excited about that one. Um, and then that's really all I have on graduation. We also have scholarship night coming up. It is May 21st. It is at 6:30, and of course, all are welcome. Um, I know I am very blessed to have been invited to that. I was told that there is lots of money being awarded, and, um, there will be some commu-, community and teacher presenters there as well. Um, and we also have the award ceremony for the high school coming up on June 1st. We are going to be awarding academic club and a few sport awards. Um, hopefully we won't, actually no, we definitely won't have anyone walk the stage early this year, which is good, because I'm happy to graduate with my entire class. Um, choir, uh, had their 5 through 12th grade, or 5th through 12th grade concert last Thursday. They said it was really good. Seniors had a great time continuing their senior song tradition. Um, and I bet it was funny, because I know them, and they definitely made it a joke, um, in a good way. They had fun with it. Um, and then AP testing, uh, we're almost done. We have Wednesday and Friday as our makeup days. I know I will be taking advantage of that Wednesday makeup day, but we had two weeks of hard and good AP testing. I have taken two, will be taking my third on Wednesday. I felt extremely well-supported through my teachers, through Ms. Walden, Ms. Dickett, and of course, Ms. Denzine was the best one, helping us and holding our hand, but making us breakfast, giving us little treats beforehand. Um, and yeah, it was just an amazing experience, and yeah, it's kind of sad this is my last meeting. It means that I graduate soon, which is exciting, but scary. I am excited and nervous, so that's really all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Well, on behalf of the board, oh, I'll let everybody say stuff, but on behalf of the board, we, we're in awe of all that you do and do well, and we're so grateful that you've added us and this event and this service to, to your community. So we're so grateful.
Definitely.
A congratulation, a plaque, and a present. And if you would like to go down for treats.
I might hug my friends.
Can we get a picture with the entire board?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll come back and visit, maybe. My sister's still here, so I'll have to come back sometimes.
All right, um, we will move on to, uh, Mr. Imers and correspondence.
Yes, we, uh, received a very nice, uh, the board received a very nice thank you letter from Jim Wolf. Jim is the Lake Mills, uh, Elementary School custodian, uh, relative to his, uh, daughter Emily. The card itself from the, the whole, uh, says, whether it was the comfort of your presence, or the touch of your hand, or the whispers of love, or the remembrance of yesteryear, each has meant so much. Thank you. That's from the whole family of Emily Wolf. And then, uh, Jim wrote, uh, as well, uh, thank you for the beautiful memorial wind chimes. Every time I hear it chime, I have a sense that Emily is around and just wanted to say hi, and that she loves us. Jim Wolf, so.
All right, now's our time for community input. Has anyone signed up for comments? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, if there are any, are there any reports within the consent agenda list that any board members would like to pull out separately to discuss or vote? All right.
I guess I would just like to comment. I feel like our personnel report is quite, has been quite small the last few months too, and it's good to see we're not having a lot of turnover. Um, we're really retaining our staff and so, thank you for all the work the administrators are doing. And I think that the culture and climate of our schools is really good, so.
Thank you. All right, this month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. April 10th, regular meeting minutes, April 24th, special meeting minutes, April 17th, at May 1st, facilities committee proceedings, May 1st, finance personnel committee proceedings, April's treasures report and vouchers and invoices, volume 331 dot 2 policies, and the personnel report.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda.
Comment first. There's a couple of those meetings I'm pretty sure I was at and I wasn't listed. Um, the facilities committee meeting, um, the Monday, April 17th, and then the special, uh, board meeting, April 24th.
We can make that motion amending those minutes.
All right, I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented, um, with Kirk's additions.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, action items. Resolution authorizing the redemption of certain, of the general obligation refunding bonds dated March 26, 2015. Please help.
Okay, so over the last two fiscal years, the board has approved the additional levy of our pre-approved referendum debt. So, um, we're just continuing that plan, basically is what this is. So, um, the board's been actively managing the debt accounts, and the district has the sufficient funds, sufficient funds to prepay one of those general obligation refunding bonds. So, under tonight's action items, I'm asking the board to approve the redemption, uh, resolution, which was prepared by Quarles and Brady. That legal document was, um, and so after the board takes action on that, I'll, I will work with Associated Trust in making, um, to processing the call notice and making the payment, and that'll happen on June, um, what did I say, June 19th. So that'll happen yet in this fiscal year. And like I said, this has been all part of the plan that we've had all along. This is just the official approval process to make, um, make the payment. Um, and the reason we're doing this now is because we were planning on waiting to see what was going to happen in our, in our November, um, election or the referendum. And pending that, Baird would have potentially had a different, um, I guess, plan for our debt and how they would layer it in. But since that didn't pass, we continued with the, the plan that we had. Um, so we let it sit for a little bit. We made a little interest on it, and now we'll go ahead and take those funds and pay them off. Um, and with the calculations, the district will save an estimated 233,000 in, um, interest costs.
Any questions before we?
I just want to say I, I appreciate all the work that's gone on and to managing the overall debt strategy. I think we're really, um, doing a nice job there, so.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move the board approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated March 26, 2015. The entire resolution can be found in the minutes of the meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, applied, applied population lab proposal. This and the previous one, including, all of these action items were discussed in the fine, personnel and finance committee meetings. Um, but this one as well, um, and it, I'm get, it is-
There's not really a contract to sign. Uh, it's just an agreement, so that's why that's not located, um, in board docs, which I see I did not put that in there. Um, so it's really just, I know we discussed that in the committee meeting. It's just paying the, uh, $3,700 for them to conduct one final, hopefully final enrollment study here.
One of the things we talked about at the meeting, Andrea, was about, um, getting some new information for our CAT advisory team so that they could really dig in and see the numbers and what's happening. Um, and one of the things, seeing, um, Berlin's Area School District, um, example in there, that was quite, I thought, thorough for, you know, what the price, the lower prices that we're getting at. And so I think that that was helpful to see some of those, um, birth rates come in, but then they had a little piece in there that then took a look at, um, the turnover within the older community and population and how that might change housing and, and the amount in the community. So I, I think that that will be, hopefully be helpful to our group, looking at what our district needs moving forward.
I agree.
All right, I will ask for a motion.
I move the board approve the applied population lab proposal for an enrollment study.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, professional staff contracts for the 2023 dash 2024 school year. Um, I agree with Andrea's assessment from the personnel report, that this is a wonderful thing not to see the turnover and, and people leaving the district, so. So.
When will we have like the final numbers on raises? Like, would I be at the next personnel?
That will, yes, it'll be part of the next, um, board meeting when I, when I present the preliminary budget. the preliminary budget.
I move the board approve the professional staff contracts for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Again, this is per, we have to approve the contracts per Wisconsin State statutes, and this is just a statutory thing we, the boards have to do, so. I will ask, uh, any further discussion or questions? If not, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Summer school staff, this is a listing of the summer school staffing schedule that we have to date.
Yep, uh, so far, so we've got a little bit of hiring to do yet for summer school.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move the board approve the summer school staff as presented.
I'll second.
If, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, student dues and fees for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Uh, the board discussed the fee scheduled at the finance personnel committee on May first, and I think everything is the same as was in that committee meeting, so.
I'll move the board approve the student dues and fees for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing, oh, go ahead, Ken, sorry.
Just a note, I, I do appreciate the, you know, other than the, the few things where materials were more expensive, we really held the line on fees and make it a, continue to make it an affordable public education, basically, you know?
Anything else? If not, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, Ford Healthcare School Nursing Services Contract. This, so no changes from last year, we'll reevaluate that going into next year in light of the deficit, so.
I guess I had one question. Um, in the, the school nurse contract, there's some mention about the, the RN's, um, training and delegating, um, giving medication to students, and then in the policy, um, uh, what is it, um, fifty-fourth, fifty-three forty, um, or fifty-three thirty, um, it states that school personnel shall not diagnose illness or administer medication of any kind, except in accordance with policy fifty-three thirty and AG fifty-three thirty. So I was just wondering if that is in conflict with the, the RN contract? Maybe it isn't.
Um, I mean, typically, what school districts do is they, we are required to provide medication administration training to any of, any individual that will be, um, administering medication, so, um, and, and some of that can get pretty specialized. So just with, uh, I would say, probably our most typical medication, um, administration is through, like, ADHD medication, which we do train our staff in providing that. There's additional training if we have to do, um, any kind of glucagon, or any, any type of specialized diabetes, um, administration, so, um, it is covered, um, as far as.
I was gonna say, too, I know teachers are trained in, like, inhalers and napipens and things, if you're on a field trip with a student and something happens. So that could be part of that policy where it's in, in accordance with, you know, because you have to have training through DPI, um, every year to be able to do that. But I know medication, the nurse would be the one doing medication at the schools.
I mean, they're overseeing all of that, right, so not just anyone, you know, they have to receive the medication training at the beginning of the year, but it is typically only the administrative assistants that is administering that type of medication.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion or questions before the motion? Okay, then hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move the board approve the Ford Healthcare Nursing Services for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
CISA two contracts. Um, this is our annual contract with CISA two. CISA two Board of Control approved a nominal increase to the membership fee for the districts in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. The per pupil cost will only increase by ten cents, for a total of eighty-five cents per student.
We try to keep those costs as minimal as possible.
I, I just had one question on, um, what the Transition Advisory Network, what, I wasn't aware of what that is.
So our, in our transition program, that's our, um, special ed program, our students with IEPs that are in the eighteen to twenty-one age range, and so we, uh, have a, a small group of staff that do attend that in order to support our students, um, in a different way. It's just such a specialized program that there's really no other opportunity for staff development for them, so, um, we do have, um, our transition teacher, and then one of the other special education teachers, and typically Jamie Everson, that attends, um, that network. So they found it very valuable in order to be able to offer those specialized, um, services.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move the board approve the CISA two contract for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, a June two thousand and twenty-four Guatemala and Belize field trip is on the docket for, I think it, June two thousand and twenty-four, so.
I just, um, was able to speak with, um, Myrna about this trip at our multilingual family night, and I, I think it's a great opportunity, um, for our students to experience a different culture and be immersed in the language, and, um, really, um, she's done a nice job at the high school and is, um, probably better suited to take this trip than, than most staff, so I am looking forward to the opportunity. Hopefully, we have a lot of, um, students take part in that.
I just want to say, this sounds like a fantastic trip, um, although it isn't to the, the city where I did language school in Guatemala, it is to Antigua. I think that the organization sounds fantastic in their approach, and the description of the trip sounds great, and I'd be willing to talk with any of the students considering going on this trip and share my experiences.
Yeah, great, super.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move the board approve the June two thousand and twenty-four Guatemala and Belize field trip as presented.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Oh, it is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
There you go. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Okay, revision of the length of the Lake Mills High School Day, would you like to give any background?
Yeah, um, so we are working through, um, we do some unique days, um, we do, um, we're working through kind of that final exam schedule at the semester, uh, at the end of both semesters, and then, um, we have a couple of days in the middle of the year where only our juniors will attend because they're taking the ACT, and another one where, um, students only attend the half a day because our ninth and tenth graders are taking the pre-ACT. So, um, Kayla and I were just working through kind of the, the specific minutes of instruction to make sure that we were not only in compliance, but that we had a little bit of a buffer, you know, in case of inclement weather as well. So, um, while it looks like we have an additional twenty-three hours of instruction, and it sounds like a lot, that's really, you know, divided, you know, between about a seven and a half hour day, it's not always, um, a ton of extra time, but, um, it does, it does provide us some additional time, you know, and, and ten extra minutes onto the day is really not going to be noticeable, I don't think, by students and staff. Our school day at the high school was fairly short compared to some of our surrounding, um, districts, so. We're working through busing on that, shouldn't impact busing, they'll probably just, um, as Brad works through that, probably get the high schoolers last instead of first, so, at the end of the day.
Okay, is there any questions? I, if, I will ask for a motion.
I move the board approve lengthening the high school day ten minutes by extending the dismissal time to three twelve PM.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion, other than my son who's going into high school and says no, but.
Well, it's better than adding ten minutes onto the beginning of the day, I can tell you that. That's a little tougher on high schoolers.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, uh, the bus discussion and was had earlier in the meeting, and I will ask for whatever motion people would like.
Just one question, is this, this is a motion to, to buy the, the pre-owned one, because it's one sixteen eight seventy-three?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you want.
I move the board approve the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four Freightliner Thomas school bus from Nelson's Bus Service in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Okay, the gifts portion is always a wonderful part, and especially this one, because I'm, it was taught by Mr. Ordle and, and other things, but I will ask for a motion for the gifts.
I'll move the board thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and the programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. A one hundred dollar donation to the school district's food pantry, The Mill, from the Lake Mills Moravian Church, a two thousand dollar donation to help sponsor Lake Mills High School FFA students Karen Bowski, Bryden Junkers, Bo Schrader, and Sydney Streich to attend the National FFA Washington DC Leadership Conference this summer, and the following donations in the memory of Mr. Jim Ordle for the music department. A one hundred dollar donation from Scott and Margot Trentadoo, a two hundred dollar donation from Michael and Heather Stout Family, a one hundred dollar donation from Tom and Robin Davidson, a one hundred dollar donation from Roger and Lynn White, a one hundred dollar donation from the Lake Mills City Band, a one hundred dollar donation from Ross and Rachel Trentadoo, a one hundred dollar donation from Alexander Milligan and Kathleen O'Leary, a three hundred dollar donation from Donald and Rachel Primer, a one hundred dollar donation from Carlos Gavasi Automation Components, and a three thousand and twenty-five dollar donation from the family of Jim Ordle. And in addition, the following donations in memory of Mr. Jim Ordle to the high school girls soccer program. A one thousand dollar donation from the family of Jim Ordle, and a two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollar and thirty-one cent donation from former students and student athletes for a memorial.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All I can say is, I had the privilege of being taught by Jim Ordle, and he was wonderful, he, and this is a testament, but I, I also see that the teachers that were honored tonight would have the same support, and I think that that is a testament to this town and this school district, so. It's been moved and seconded, I would like a roll call vote, or any discussion? I would like a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Future agenda items.
Uh, we will have Jessica Noche with us, um, to present, uh, multilingual reports. She's excited to share some of the end of the year data and the successes in that program, and then, um, it'll be the Tasha Naylor Show, um, with the preliminary budget presentation.
All right, looking forward to it. All right, with that, is there any other future agenda items that are requested at this point? All right, hearing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn and eat cake.
I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
I, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, we are adjourned.